Small equipment, correct?
Right.
Okay, so it sounds like basically a two, two bay hole building, uh heated or unheated?
Heated.
Heated, okay.
At least on the one side.
Yeah, well, we definitely need the truck side heated, right?
Oh yeah, absolutely.
We'll be washing the truck in there, that kind of stuff, you know, after storms and.
Okay. Alright, uh so we're not talking anything terribly substantial or difficult. So taking the, the original conversation I'd heard on it was the salt bay, that had me scratching, I had a whole lot more because salt bays are high use construction.
Yeah.
Taking that out, takes a lot of concern to structure out and bring this down to just a simple building. My recommendation on it would be to just go with hole building, we can insulate it, put some metal liner panels leased around the uh one side of where you're gonna be washing from the truck down. And I would go with just a simple overhead propane furnace. Just keep it simple, all you need is enough heat to keep it, keep it above forty-five degrees in there in the winter.
Yeah.
Uh when they're in there washing the truck down, they can turn the temperature up a little bit more, but a little bit more.
Right.
For the most part, just keep it a reasonable temperature. So yes, I can very easily put those drawings together for you, that's a very simple building. Uh one of my questions, I know we provided your building code inspection many years back, I didn't know, do you currently have someone appointed or are you an off down at this point?
Of?
Uh building code official, do you have an appointed building code official?
That's code inspector.
Code inspector.
Code inspections, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Reason for that is that just means we go with handling opposed to having to ship everything down and deal with everything.
Right.
I think we need to start working right now on a grant to help pay for this too.
Well, I mean, if there's grants out there for.
Oh, there's grants out there.
You know, we struck a deal with the Anamish gentleman down here to store it in his shed for the winter.
Okay.
And we just plowed the driveway down. And, you know, and I asked him, uh how, you know, were we good for the summer? He said, I thought this was a winter deal. And I said, just hang tight, leave us work on it then, so still in his. Still out there, right?
As far as I know.
Has he told you that?
Now, he did tell me that we probably could park it up there if uh he can find a place to park it outside and for the summer if we need a place to park it.
Thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Can we talk before you leave?
Yeah, sure, I'll, I'll, I'll be outside, we'll be talking outside anyway.
So, okay, just a couple of questions then, alright, uh you have the size of the truck, so we know what size of building we need, right?
I, I didn't know, yeah.
And what, what, what are you thinking on the, the second bay, overhead garage door also?
I, yeah, I don't know about the same.
That way, if we did have a skid steer for some reason, you know, we could run it in, you know what I'm saying, in there also. And I think we wanna make that bay big enough that he could have like a small desk in there to keep record, his records of, you know what I'm saying, snowplow and the plow trucks, that kind of thing.
Okay. Uh headroom in there, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm thinking I'd probably give it a little bit higher to ceiling. Again, if you're bringing something with a dump bed in there and wanna wash it down in the winter, you wanna be able to lift the bed.
Yes.
You're not all the way hard way.
Yes. Absolutely.
Plenty of height.
Does your truck have a uh safety prop or you lift the bed or what?
Yeah, so these go up pretty, almost all the way to put the, put the leg up to.
Okay. Ideally, we have the roof high enough that we can get it up with the safety prop in, but I don't know if, we might be getting pretty high with the roof on that. Uh so that's something we wanna take.
Probably most of my washing stuff will be done outside because of the mess it's gonna make.
Okay.
I'll probably find a nice day to do it.
Okay.
Probably bring it inside, let it drip dry.
Okay. So if you're not washing it inside, that's.
I, I wouldn't, I would like, I'd rather not wash it inside.
Okay.
Can I say something?
If we could have like a, I don't know if you're gonna be.
Only a square, twenty-four inches.
Okay.
The length is twenty-six, or twenty-five six.
I think we should situate the building down there also, so that if we do have to put those bays in to mix stuff, if they don't allow us to do it anymore. Make sure we have room to do that.
That we could add, that could be something we could add on to the building, right, yeah.
Yeah. Place one of the buildings.
Because what if they don't allow us to do that anymore?
We should think ahead.
Right, right, I agree with that. And my thought, when you first, when you pull in, we had the sewer plant would be right there on the right with the back of it towards the creek, towards this way, the back would.
The sign's there too. The sewer authority signs there too.
Well, that can come out of there and that can go on the end of the building.
Right.
But neither do.
That's the piece we own.
Stay away from the water line going in there.
That's the piece we own, is that square piece on the bottom there, right?
We own that whole area there.
The whole area?
That's what I meant.
Borough owns that whole area.
Okay.
Clear out along the creek, right? And then.
Have to look.
Yeah, I think, and then back behind the sewer plant and back down.
I wasn't sure about back behind, but I did up front.
Ryan, Ryan, was anything brought up or discussed at all at Concerned Citizens, uh not, not that anything was officially, but uh is there anything to tell us at all?
No. It was a long drawn out meeting, it was kind of a.
It was about bylaws.
Yeah, it was more about setting the new bylaws.
Okay.
So it wasn't, I mean, there was a couple of people there to, to, they asked for some money, but it wasn't.
Have they established a uh application form or anything yet?
They want this, the new board, they're, cause they're still operating on the old Concerned Citizens bylaws. So this whole new thing now is they want, they need to set new bylaws and they can't appoint the new board to set the policy. It's gonna come out until the new bylaws are changed. So we gotta get the bylaws changed before the, the new, uh the directors are appointed to start setting standards of who's gonna get and how it's gonna be did it up.
This could be a big help, Ryan, if we can get, if we get some money from that.
Oh, I know, I, I know it would.
There's been other people submitted things also, and they're not gonna, the new board is the one that's gonna decide about the grants and they're gonna do it privately, right, Ryan, not.
Well, the, the grant applications, I mean, they're gonna, you can, anybody can submit one.
Right.
But uh like the general membership will know about them, but the decision who's getting what and how much will be done, again, like in executive session.
And they're probably not gonna decide anything till September.
Well, then, we can, there won't be any more decisions made on any money getting handed out until the new board is set.
I think we should.
So I don't, I, I would say, don't, don't bank on them giving, donating money to this project.
Right, right, right.
Until the new board is set.
Right.
I think we need to start looking at commissioners and looking at some state stuff for a grant for some money for this. If we can definitely get it, it's infrastructure.
I mean, if it's available, absolutely.
Yeah.
But we have to, I think Alan needs to get us drawn up what we want because we know we need to put it out for bid. For three, three bids, and you know, we need to move, is what I'm saying.
So what I'll do is I'll start with uh just the basic building drawings, I'm not gonna focus an awful lot on the site, the site configuration.
Right.
We will need a site drawing to get our building permits and a few other things there. But the building drawing that primarily do that in my office is what you need to get some estimates from contractors, excuse me.
So they're all built, knitting on the same thing, basically.
And Meyer, don't forget my employee lounge.
Oh, yeah. That's down, that's down in the cave. So, yeah, I mean, and something could happen, yeah, I just thought one record, something could happen between now and then if this all falls through, that we do not need this building, I don't know that. You know, I, I'm just saying, so it's something we need to do and prepare ourselves, but.
I'm really hoping that mom's property with her barn gets built and can utilize that.
What I'm talking about, cause I, I heard through the grapevine that Mr. Nicholas wants to sit down and have a talk with me. I have not run into him, I mean, cause he's, I'm the one that he talks to. You know, for the fire company, Borough, whatever, well, I mean, we grew up together and I just heard word that he wants to talk to me, I don't know if it's about that out there. Or if it's about the water tanks that we're working on for the fire company, he's buying three two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallon water tanks to distribute throughout the valley for fire protection for us. Yeah, so we're working on, we wanted to put one up here between that back built, back small reservoir at the in-ground, so it might fall, that and the creek.
Okay.
Right there on the corner.
Okay.
But I don't think it'll fit.
Is Jake gonna be okay with us storing it out there this summer?
He, I just talked to Jake the other night and he said up behind the barn or something, he's, he can find a place outside.
Oh, you wanna leave it say outdoor?
Well, let me ask you this, I don't know if that would fit in your mother's shed out there, the way the shed is built, I don't think the door is big enough. Thinking if it would, if we would ask your mother if we could back it in and just leave it set for the summer, it's in, it are protected.
And we could rent a spot out there.
Rent, that's what I'm saying, rent, if it'll fit.
Hasn't this thing always set outside or not?
No, it's always set in Bob's giraffe pad.
Okay.
Yeah. Out of the warehouse to put it.
Well, a piece going up to Corral Mountain, right there on the left, the big building that's set back where the sawmill used to be, did they rent that out?
That big full barn, they usually have that full of hay.
Uh they, he rents it out to people with.
Campers.
Oh.
Campers, campers in there.
Yeah, but it's not heated, right?
No.
Oh, would that be heated?
It would be heated for summer roof, yeah.
Yeah.
Who is that, the Anamish?
I think it's Anamish, but I'm not sure.
Mac Peachey used to own it.
Peachey, yeah.
It's the guy that has the trailer there where uh Kiefer's used it.
Yeah.
Need me for anything else?
No, I don't think so, we'll just.
Yeah, we do.
Take off. Very happy, he must talk to them before.
Okay, I'll just step out for five minutes.
Yeah, go ahead, we'll go over some of this other stuff.
Right.
So, like I said, I don't know, I mean, I'm hoping that him drawing this drawing is for nothing.
Right.
Yep.
That'd be the ideal plan.
Yeah.
Yep.
I know mom keeps asking me, have you heard anything, cause she has a, I asked her yesterday and she said, nobody's gotten hold of her.
That door could be renovated, right, uh Meyer, I mean, if it, if it is too small, that'd be a minor thing.
Right, that, that's what I'm saying, it'd be ideal.
Is, is there room in that building?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we could put the truck in there if it would fit.
Actually, David, David has a car in there right now and I used to have a big pickup in there.
Do you think your mother would be open to that?
I don't think right now because of David's car being in there and she has some other stuff stored in there. So I don't think right now it would fit in, and if it did come down to where we needed it, we would need to take the stalls out of it. Cause the door stalls are still in it.
Yeah.
But there's a tack room in there that Ryan could use for.
His lounge.
His lounge. And there is, there is a water line hooked to it, but it's never been hooked up.
Like you said, we need this one better started.
Oh, absolutely, we need to start.
That would be the ideal situation.
Because has anyone heard anything about the sect, this uh triangle piece up here?
No.
Uh, something happened at the charter school the other night too, at the Concerned Citizens meeting. Um remember how the Lions Club was asking for money from the Logan, Temboro, Logan Township and Greentown Township?
They, they stopped.
Maureen was there and she, and she, and Chris, and didn't Gene Nicholas say he was gonna pay for it or something, didn't?
Well.
But Gene, Gene was there.
Paid for what?
Were there for the fence and stuff down there.
There's some private organizations that said, private businesses that said they would help.
I thought Bressler was uh involved.
On.
Was, was Bob Bressler?
Bob is involved because of Kenny Bressler. But on Monday night's meeting, we opened an envelope and we did get the foundation grant for ten thousand dollars.
That is correct, I know I couldn't get that.
For the Lions.
Yeah, for the Lions.
That's for that pass.
Yeah, so we got ten thousand dollars to head towards it, there's only like, I think it'd be eighty-five thousand dollars more. And I think there was one or two private businesses that we're gonna throw in for that.
And Maureen was out there asking to Concerned Citizens for the five thousand, was it, Ryan?
She never really asked for an amount, she just submitted stuff that like, that is uh the cost of the fence.
Yeah, we did.
And doing things like that, she never asked for an amount.
Uh that's just like, sort of like with Gene Nicholas, you know, around about, and Gene and Heidi were there too, so.
I was with Gene, uh just the other day over the death of his sister and I really, he never said a thing about the piece, I was, maybe he didn't wanna talk about it that, that occasionally.
Cause I know it's gonna come up soon as weather breaks because I heard the bitch at the end of last year, that, about the weeds up on that triangle piece.
Yeah, yeah, I posted it.
As of right now, it is Gene Nicholas's, it is not ours.
Right.
I just wondered if anyone heard, I mean, move on.
Heard a thing.
I haven't heard anything either.
The only thing I heard was Jonathan Jeffries and they were up there taking the post out and it was the day that Leah Fisher wrapped, that day, they were up there taking the posts and stuff out.
Yeah, they were cleaning that up for a few days up there.
Alright.
Is that it on the garage?
Yeah, for right now.
Okay. We need to set up a public meeting, uh probably upstairs in the fire hall. And let people know, Alan and I have been talking, let people know what we're gonna do. That in probably the end of August in through September and October. That we're gonna make up appointments for these guys to go in and change meters out. Uh how we're gonna do it. We want to advise the public, cause remember Meyer, back in the last, in the Borough meeting, you had said you didn't think thirty days was long enough? For people needed to change things, well, we wanna tell them what we're doing and why we're doing it, but if we tell them now in May, they're gonna have May, June, July, August, September, five months to get their stuff right versus that thirty days, so I'm not gonna have a problem. Once we start in thirty days, if we find a problem in your house, I'm not gonna have a problem giving you thirty days to fix it, because you've had five months already.
That's fine if that person, if the person living there knows that.
Well, we're gonna make sure everybody knows it.
How are you going to make sure that everyone knows there's an issue in their house?
We're talking about putting up some mailers and letting people start finding out and checking it, there's people here that know who's, who's whose.
Oh, I do too, but that don't mean the person living in that house knows they can steal water, that's what I'm saying.
There, we're gonna have to find out.
Why should we have a public meeting, the last public meeting we had up there, hardly anybody showed up.
Well, we just really want anybody to say.
Why don't we just send out letters?
That's right, put on a website and send out letters.
We can, we need to set up rules of how we're gonna do this and let everybody know it.
Well, you can make appointments.
Yeah.
For installation.
Well, we're going, we're gonna need to do that, we're gonna need appointments for installation and make sure the homeowner knows it.
I mean, that could be a way for it to down.
Yeah, we're gonna need to set up some rules and Alan was, was headstrong on that when he was back in, he can tell you on the thirty day thing was, was his idea. To make sure that people are doing this right and they're getting their stuff fixed. We need to decide, are we gonna pursue, if we find somebody and they refuse to fix it, where they are stealing water, what do we do? We're gonna have to pursue charges and turn the water.
That could be writing a letter, I mean, if you don't abide by this and fix any, any necessary, you know, fixes.
I don't think you're gonna find very many.
No.
Bob's told me, Bob's told me about three or four already.
I only know of one.
I know of one, it's the only one in this borough that I'm aware of.
I only know of one.
And it's real close.
Yeah.
What's that?
How do you steal water?
There's a, there's a hose connector before the meter. There's a hose connection before the meter, between the meter and the street.
In other words, they're taking water off before it goes through the meter.
Yeah, absolutely, and the only one, the only reason I'm aware of it is because Craig used to live there.
Where's that?
Right here at Dave Sam's house, right up here where Buck's daughter lives.
Okay.
Right inside the door, the water line comes in, there's a hose connector, over here's the meter.
Didn't you say at one time your mom had that too down there?
Nope, mom's is not like that.
Okay.
Well, then I know of two, since you told me that.
Or the other one. I don't know the other one, that one is, unless they change, unless they fix it.
Down here.
It's close by.
Down that way.
No, it's close by up here.
Uh oh, that one may be another one.
So probably the same guy built that house too.
Maybe.
So, so what they need to do, you, you gotta remember, you know, when we make these appointments, that the, someone from the water has to be available to turn that water off at the street, because they're gonna have to cut that line, take that valve out and then go to the meter. So that way you can fix it.
Yeah. Our, our guys are gonna, one of us is gonna have to be available to go out there and turn the water on and off so they, their plumber can fix it. Most plumbers can turn the water off.
But you're gonna have to turn it off to put the meter in also, cause you're breaking the line to put the meter in.
We're gonna have to, we have that capability.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's not, that's why they need to fix it before these guys go in to change the meter. That's why I wanna get it out there so people know to check, to find out, whatever.
Yeah, but I, I think, I agree, a letter needs drawn up, making the people aware that we have received this grant from Putten County, uh whatever it's called. And we're buying all new water heaters, you will be contacted in the very near future to set up an appointment to have your water meter, your meter replaced. And at that time, if we find anything that needs repaired, I don't know how you'd state it. You know, all repairs are on you and you have thirty days to fix them, just make them aware of that way. No sense having public meetings, cause like Alan says, they're not gonna come.
Yeah, they, they.
If you don't think we need to, we don't, then we won't, it was just a suggestion that was brought up.
I don't think we need it. Just do it with the letter.
That's how we did the water rate increase.
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, we had a handful.
Yeah, because they won't come to the meeting and complain.
Yeah, correct.
No, then we'll do that and we, so we're gonna need to line up that letter once we get the meters. And then we're gonna have to figure out a way to do the appointments.
When's the meter's coming?
It should be the end of August, beginning of September.
Some of them are here now, right?
Uh no, we have, the school's meter is here.
I'd like ten of them to come.
No.
Oh, as soon as the ten come, I think we need one of them in.
Yeah, we can start. Come earlier than the rest of them.
Yeah, we have ten that are coming, it should be here very shortly.
Okay, well, I think we need to install those.
Those ten, yeah.
Cause if we wait till August, you're gonna be installing meters.
We're gonna do that so that the guys have some training installing now, because they're gonna come show them how to do it and get it set up the whole nine yards. That way, when they come to add the other hundred and ninety in, it, it can go pretty slick.
And who we plan on doing this?
Uh Leroy and Donnie. They're gonna do it. I've already talked with them, they already know it, they're all for it. Uh one thing that we're gonna do or we need to do or discuss, and this is where Alan came in, was we need to have somebody. I don't want Donnie and Leroy to have to be the bad guy, I don't want them to have to take any crap. But we need to have somebody come in to protect them and us and say, yeah, they put the meter in right, there's no problems with it. And also make sure that they, somebody says, yeah, they're, don't have their system set up to steal water. Alan said he'd be more than happy to have his people come over and do it and inspect things after the guys are done. Because the guys don't wanna be in that situation where, hey, you're my buddy, close your eyes while we do this.
Yeah, it should be somebody.
Not from here.
Yeah, from out of the area.
Exactly.
Alan, Alan would be good to.
Yeah, Alan said he'd have a guy come over and do it, but he'd like to set it up where the guy could do ten or twelve.
At a time.
At a time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think we need to do that, and that takes the booger off of Donnie and Leroy.
Okay, and they could have a, Donnie and Leroy, while they're in there, they could have a checklist.
Yeah.
Which I think we need, and you know, they put the customer's name on it, you know, this is, we did this, we did this, we did this, it's finalized, the meter number, I mean, we have a paper trail. Have the homeowner sign if yes, that everything looks good, no leaks, that kinda thing.
Yeah.
And then do we truly need an inspector if we do that, do we truly need to pay an inspector after that? The homeowner signs off stating that it's okay.
Well, the inspector part of it was kind of to make sure that they're not tapping in before the meter.
That would be one of the checklist.
If Donnie and them, yeah, but you're a homeowner, okay, say you have it like that. And you do the, hey man, we've been friends forever, can you oversee that and don't look at it, I didn't wanna put Donnie and Leroy in that position.
They both have smartphones and they take a picture of that area when they're complete, and a picture goes with every install. You can see, there's no valve there, it comes out of the wall to the meter. I'm just saying, how much money are we talking to have someone inspect that? Two hundred and homes.
This was Alan's idea, so when he gets back in here, bark at him and, and say what you're thinking. Because Bob Dill even said the same thing. Bob Dill's the one that put it in our heads, we need to get it checked out.
But if you have the homeowner signing off on it, that, you know, there's no leaks, the new meter hasn't been installed, there's no leaks, what else can be wrong?
I'm just looking at ways that they didn't have to be put in a position of, hey, you're my buddy, don't look at that.
I don't think either one of those two would buy into that.
I don't think.
I don't think so either, but they appreciated the fact that when I talked to them, that they kinda liked that idea.
There, there's only, like you guys are talking, there's only two places that really have to be concerned about like that though.
No, there's more than that.
Well, what you could do is when they have it done, have council, uh a member of council plus the uh, go in and look at it.
I kinda like Meyer's idea. I kinda like the idea, just taking a picture.
Yeah, and getting a picture of it.
Now, now first, ten feet between this wall here, where, where it comes in and the meters over here, nothing we can do about it, once that meter's installed, we're out of there.
That's right.
That's on now.
That is.
But if you get a clear picture from that meter to the wall where the water line comes in, you're fine.
Well, there's the man right there. Alan, we're into that discussion about getting the system, once they install the meters, having your guy check them and all that, and Meyer doesn't feel that's necessary.
It's, I've seen good and I've seen bad with the water meter installation. And it's that it's really up to you, your call on that, uh your comfort level, one of the things it does do for you is when your guy gets into a, I don't wanna say contentious, but a difficult situation for him. It makes it easy for him to say, look, I don't have a choice, I can't overlook this because there's an independent order that's gonna come in and check it. Uh so that is one place where it benefits you. It's gonna give you a good level of comfort that you know they're all installed properly and there are no, no potential for problems there. But, you know, the potential for problems is fairly limited, so, and I guess a bit of it come down to who you're gonna have do the installation, your level of confidence there. Uh I don't know if you're hiring it out or.
Two of our employees.
Okay.
And what I had said was, we have a checklist, like it say, Sam and I are the two installers, checklist we go by it. The homeowner's name, the meter number, and we give them a checklist, we do this, 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 and the homeowner signs off on it that, hey, the meter's been installed, there are no leaks. And then when we leave, we get a picture of where the water, line comes in the wall to the meter.
Okay.
Aren't we covered there?
Okay. But again, it comes down to your comfort level, if you feel that you can adequately control it and you don't have concerns, you can cover. Okay, but again, it comes down to your comfort level, if you feel that you can adequately control it, and you don't have concerns, you can cover yourself there.
My trade is that where it comes in or the wall.
What?
I, I'd strongly encourage, at the very least, a photo of each installation, documenting that there are no, no connections before it, and make sure both people sign off on it.
Right, cause after that photo's taken, we can't control what they do afterwards.
Yeah.
Yeah, never could, no, right.
And it can be filed like that then, and we can, we could just say that it's gonna be inspected by the, the board or something, right?
Well, we're not gonna go around checking every install or house.
No, but, I mean, we can just put it in a file, you know, and if they-
Yeah, that sign off sheet.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can say it's gonna be reviewed, but-
The board.
Yeah, just reviewed.
Every, the serial number of every meter has to be recorded and, and filed, it's basically each.
Each meter, and that's each water customer, isn't it?
Well, there is a serial number that is recorded, and when we have it in the computer system, when I bring up Meyer and Sandler's name, it's gonna show your meter number, your serial number, the whole thing. We're gonna be able to look at anybody's meter every time.
Right.
There is one business down here on Mill Street, where Bob thinks we ought to put a pit in, right after it comes off the main line, put a pit in there, and of course, your meter will be in the pit. Uh, that's his suggestion there, rather than have the meter in the building. For more reasons than one, the pipe that's coming off of that main line is glue joints, and, you know, with the glue joint-
What they do.
What they do, yeah, when it gets freezing temperatures, and that's, that's one of the reasons. Right?
And when you do that, replace it from the main out to meter pit with good pipe, as glue joint, I tell people glue joint has no business underground.
Right. So, I mean, we ought to consider that when we replace the meters, it may cost us a few extra bucks to put a pit in down there, but I think we should.
And speaking of pits, uh, Dave, I'll let you tell about the phone call you got on the pit out of the Charter School, and where we went with that.